Are these work, these are working?
Yes.
Okay. Welcome, everyone. This is Lisa Edinburgh, Chair of the Westboro School Committee. Today is Wednesday, February 15th, 2023. This meeting of the Westboro School Committee is called to order. Please stand if you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you for joining us this evening. I'd like to notify everyone in the room with us tonight that this meeting is being recorded and livestreamed by Westboro TV. School committee meetings are available for remote viewing or listening on Westboro TV's government channels, Verizon 28 and Charter 192, and online on the Westboro TV YouTube channel. Thank you to Westboro TV for covering the broadcast this evening. We have with us tonight Superintendent Amber Bach, Assistant Superintendent Dr. Daniel Mayer, Director of Finance and Administration Dave Gordon could not be with us this evening, Vice Chair of the Westboro School Committee Steve Durett, school committee members Kristin Vincent, Raghu Nandan, Steve and Bachelor, our student representative Arutri Kragosh. Our recording secretary Jen Benton could not be here this evening, will be watching from livestreamed, and we have staff from Westboro TV here tonight. And I'd like to personally welcome everyone sitting in front of us and those watching from home. Welcome. Our agenda for this meeting is as follows. We'll begin with an approval of minutes from the February 1st, 2023 regular session meeting, then hear from Amber Bach with the superintendent's report, followed by the assistant superintendent's report, continuing the meeting with the school committee member reports, followed by the building project updates. We'll then potentially hear from citizens, during citizens' requests. Then we'll recognize the Mass Partnerships for Youth Poster Contest Award recipient, followed by representatives from the high school club, DECA, sharing their experiences with us. We'll continue with an ELL program or ELAE program update from special guest Latisha Broomfield Field, excuse me. Soon thereafter, we'll receive a memo about the preschool tuition. That will bring us into our budget town meeting update. And finally, we'll end our regular session meeting with an announcement of a Safe Routes to School grant. How appropriate that there is music to talk about our safe.
Spam.
Oh, I am so sorry. I skipped one of our agenda items, which is the vote on the 2023-2024 school year calendar. Thank you, committee members.
You already asked me.
I know. We're gonna have our final vote on the calendar for next year. And then finally, we will be moving into an executive session meeting and adjourn for this evening. Let's begin with an approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from February 1st, 2023 regular session?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Steve Bachelor. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have a five to zero vote, five being present, and we move on to the next agenda item, which is the superintendent's report. Amber?
Great. Good to see all of you tonight. We're all kind of adjusting to your location where we oftentimes kind of go back and forth between our meeting spaces, so we're hopeful everybody finds us tonight. I know we're actually waiting on a couple of our guests. So it's been a busy week and heading into vacation. I just have a couple highlights. I was able to be in buildings during Valentine's Day, which is always a lot of fun at the elementary level. I was able to be at Armstrong, and there were lots of academic, interesting, targeted Valentine's Day activities going on. Mathematics and relationship building and games and writing, but all really festive and positive and just really wonderful energy. I was able to be there at one of the first grade classrooms, having their buddy class from Hastings come over. So they were meeting, and I just think having a snack together and visiting during Valentine's Day, they get together three or four times, the buddy programs. There's lots of stuff like that that goes on all the time that often is invisible unless we bring it forward here and mention as part of the fabric of the things that make school special and enjoyable and memorable to students, while we're often emphasizing high academic achievement here in the work around what's going on with curriculum. There's a whole cultural norm around well-being and the enjoyment of coming to school for friends, and so it's just an important balance that you know those things are going on as well. I was able this week to continue my community visits. I went to the civic club last week and presented to them on the budget and information around how well the district is doing recovering from the past several years. I shared performance data, general well-being, life in schools, and information on the budget. I did the same today when I attended the Rotary Club. Gave me a chance to highlight the development of the business arm of the Sugar Shack, working there with a bunch of business people, and then talking about the different community aspects of outreach that our groups of students do. I was highlighting to them a project that we have underway in town with the Veterans' Monument Subcommittee and our arts department at the high school collaborating on developing a new monument, a Veterans War Monument at the new cemetery out at the end of town down near Glenn Street on your way to Grafton. That is a pretty amazing project. It's now substantial enough that I would like to move it to the agenda in the next couple of months so that that team of students can come and present the development of the design, talk about the process, and they will see the acceptance of that developed monument through to fabrication and installation. So a really beautiful example of kind of project-based, community-based, authentic learning and a shared project where we're also giving back to our community. So they met last week with the Subcommittee of Veterans over at the high school, and were really pleased with the design development. So I just think that's a wonderful highlight. I'll bring you more specificity on that and let them present to you now that that looks like it's been accepted as a plan to move forward. I would also note that I will be going to the Senior Center, continuing my community visits next week with Christy Williams. We enjoy presenting together. Aspects of the whole budget story overlap into one total town budget, and so we enjoyed presenting together last year, and we will be doing the same, I think, next week on, I'll let you know what day. I will be there on Tuesday. Breakfast at the Senior Center, 8:30 to 11:00. If any of you would like to join me, it's always a really nice opportunity to visit with community members. And then I think, again, to note as well, next week is vacation, winter break, and we have had probably one of the best stretches of academic work uninterrupted in my career here. It's been really incredible to see just the continuity of building-based work across all of our schools, and I'm hopeful that it continues to aid the recovery of instructional gaps and emotional stresses that we know we've been discussing in an ongoing way. So for me, I'm pleased to see a really uninterrupted stretch. I'm very hopeful that when we return, we'll get another one where we come back from February break, and if the weather remains on our side, into March and up to April break, a really powerful learning stretch for students. I think it's important for our parents to know, it's important to get your children to school, it's important that they're in regular attendance. It makes a huge difference when they are in the seat, ready to go, and we've got instruction in front of them. So things are moving forward well. I think everybody's ready for vacation. I think there's, you know, not, they're not exhausted. Like, this time last year, there was always a sense that faculty and students and families were really kind of almost desperate to get to vacation. I would say I was in buildings, and I think Daniel would agree, it was just a more festive feeling of the week before a break and good energy and less, I think, emotional and physical exhaustion in families and in our faculty, which is good to see. So that is my report for tonight.
Well, thank you very much. I am going to mention, we did get a note while Amber was speaking, that Arutri Kragosh was not able to make it tonight and that her, I assumed she had perhaps forgotten about our location change. If you notice, we're in Town Hall instead of the Great Hall in Forbes Building, so she will give her report next meeting. We're sorry to miss her tonight. Daniel, your report?
Yeah, I have one thing to update you on tonight, and that's the, in December, we were notified by the Department of Education that we were going to be monitored as part of, like, it's a routine, kind of, every six years, they basically do this intensive request of documents to, there's an office called the Office of Public School Monitoring, and we have to do a self-assessment on 30 different indicators, everything from looking at our bullying policies to, you know, civil rights to special needs to ELL population, and they ask us to upload numerous documents. There's, on those 30 indicators, there's probably multiple documents for each of the indicators. So it's fairly onerous, and it's kind of a little bit like getting a root canal. And, you know, the, I mean, I think the intentions are good in terms of making sure we're in compliance with important rules and regulations, but it is time-consuming, and all of our administrators are basically actively involved, and it pulls us a little bit away from the core mission of what we're, you know, doing on a day-to-day basis. But I just think it's important for you to know that that's going on, and between now and May, we're, like, pushing to get these documents, like, you know, in shape and uploading them to the Department of Education. And then next fall sometime, they will let us know, they'll come out for a site visit and ask us questions, and basically they generate a report and then give us a, you know, any feedback, they give us feedback if there's any indicators and where they think we need to, like, make improvements.
Well, I hope at the end of that root canal that you have a crown to speak for it.
Me too.
The crown goes in. Okay, we'll move right along to our, well, we'll move right along to school committee member reports. We're going to begin with Steve Bachelor.
I have nothing to report tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Kristin Vincent?
Nothing to report, thank you.
Raghu Nandan?
I have nothing to report tonight, thanks.
And Steve will wait for your building update?
Thank you.
I have a few things. First, a reminder that the town local election is March 14th, from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM at the high school. Please get out to vote. The town meeting is March 25th. I'm assuming, and I'm asking here also, with Amber here, is babysitting services provided for the town meeting?
Yes.
Yes? And the town meeting begins at 9:00 AM and starts until the town meeting decides to adjourn or until it's done. I also wanted to bring up, through having been on the bus transportation committee, that it feels like a lot has changed in the last few weeks when it comes to bus transportation, and for many, it's probably completely invisible. That means that you have a driver who is on time and has not made you think that there's anything amiss, but I wanted to let our committee know that there have been more double up routes, the double runs, we call them, and I think it's important for us to start to get a sense of how many late runs are there, how many routes are really short of driver. I want to know about our new buses, because it sounds like that may be amiss lately. It really, I guess, from a school committee point of view, which is my representation on that committee, is specifically how much has been contracted and is not being met. And so I wanted to bring it to our attention to request a visit from NRT, as we've done in the past. We've met with bus companies who've come before us so that we can address some of these issues, potentially at the March 1st meeting.
Okay. I'm just grabbing notes, and then I'll recap what you want. Okay. So one of the things we do in working meetings is, as Lisa and I meet weekly, with her being the chair, we're always projecting ahead on the meeting framework. So having heard these concerns, I certainly wanted her and to have the opportunity to bring them up here, she was voicing them to me. And I think as we look at the structure, we can put out a request, and Dave is not here tonight, and he oversees transportation, he's home with a sick family member, so I want to make sure I've got it clear what we're going to request. We're going to request an update. Do you want it in a memo? Do you want, like, an actual memo from David with those delineated items that we want from NRT? Or are you comfortable with me kind of like putting my own kind of design on it with him as long as we cover the items?
I think it's okay to, what does the committee think? Do we want, I mean, exactly what she's asked. Do you want it to be official as a memo, so it's in our record? Or do you want it, I think if NRT is here, personally, what I think is, if NRT is here, then we can address our concerns with the company directly, because we actually have monthly conversations with the bus company through this transportation committee that was set up about two and a half years ago. And I don't think it's terrible to ask the questions straight on. What do you think, Steve?
Well, I think it's fair that we give them something like an agenda or issues, a list of issues that we want to discuss.
That we want to address. Yep.
You know, and then you're going to have an open discussion at the end of that. That way, they come prepared, they don't hem and haw, they answer questions or define how they're going to deal with whatever the issue is. And I think it's, not only is it fair, but it's also efficient, so that they will answer the question that they've asked. Whether we like the answer is a different story, but at least it's an efficient process to get things done. Well, I would think that would be a wise.
Yeah. I would think, working from that premise and knowing what we know about the past, that, and I'll speak for Dave here, I think he likes to create a structure so that he can interact with them, so I'll have him issue a memo with a clear list of concerns or questions that we want addressed from NRT as an update of performance. And then I want it to focus on the things you've highlighted. How many of our new buses have been rotated out of the cycle, and are they within contract, the buses we have? How many late runs are we running or double runs? The number of drivers currently contracted with the company in comparison to their obligation across multiple contracts? Are they labeling the buses properly is another complaint? And I'll put those and any others that come forward, a meeting with the principals tomorrow at a principals' meeting, and I'll have them add any other pieces, and then we'll bring that to David, and he can issue a memo that he sends to them. And then we want them in attendance on the first, at least one of their representatives. Okay. All right. I feel like that's a good path forward. I think we don't want to be adversarial, but we want to be clear, and I think we did this with NRT, we do this with first student on multiple occasions to move things forward with them, so I think it's a sound approach.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
And I had reported about this four weeks ago in my report, because I noticed that there was a decline in service, and it has not been rectified, and I think it's time we dig in just to find out what's going on.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Also, an announcement that the pancake breakfast, it's pancake breakfast time. It's the 44th annual Pancake Breakfast put on by the Boy Scouts, March 5th, at the Knights of Columbus, 7 to 1. Look for the Scouts all over town selling tickets. I also wanted to congratulate the 2023 Westboro Youth Football and Cheer Hall of Fame inductees, Abby Thompson and Tucker Moran, were recently inducted into the Westboro High School Youth Football and Cheer Hall of Fame. Thought that was amazing. Also, there's karaoke night for teens at the Westboro Public Library tomorrow, tomorrow night, at the library, February 16th, 6:30 to 7:30. And if you've been having trouble with that new iPad you got as gift, or maybe you updated to a new version and now nothing works, never fear, tech help is here. At the library with your devices and your questions, receive one of, help from the tech squad at the library. Past patrons have raved how helpful it was to sit with tech squad members, and so that is this Saturday, February 18th, at the Westboro Public Library from 10 to 12. Also wanted to mention, I am deeply saddened to learn of the unfathomable loss of life caused by the earthquake in Turkey and Syria, and offer my heartfelt condolences to those in our community mourning loss losses. And that's the end of my reports. We're going to move on to the building project update. Steve?
Thank you. I am happy to say that all the scope of design and construction for the fail school is now complete. The geothermal system is in service. The antifreeze was finally brought up to the level that the contract required, and it has been functioning well, I think, since that happened about a week and a half ago. Now, the project itself doesn't go away, because the building committee now has to deal with the negotiations of settlement issues associated with open items that some we've rejected, some we have to discuss, in order to satisfy the completion of the project and the sign-off on all items associated with it, because the project under the MSBA, 5% of the total money that were due is held by MSBA. And until we reach a settlement with all the players, we can't seek that money. The amount of money is somewhere in the order of, well, different people have different ideas, but I think it's around $750,000 that is still outstanding to the town. And on other business, the Hastings Project work design is complete, and those designs are out for bid, at least they're on the street for bid. And the bid date is, information will be received just before town meeting, which allows us to bring to town meeting the values that came in as a result of the bid. And we'll wait and see how that all works out. That's it.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are going to be talking about town meeting budget a little bit later, and it's good to know that that number will be on the Warren article we discuss. It'll probably be added to version 25 of the Warren article.
There's a new six. We have five we're going to look at tonight, but I don't think the language in what we'll review of our articles has changed, so we should be fine.
Problem. Okay, so we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is citizens' request. Is there anyone here tonight that wishes to make a statement to the school committee? I'm going to have you hold off until I just first read through the policy. It's good to see people are here for citizens' requests. Some important pieces of this policy include that you must be a current resident of Westboro. Speakers are allowed to address the school committee about issues within the school committee's purview, such as Westboro School District policy or budget. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak to the school committee. Written comments longer than three minutes may be presented to the presiding chair before or after the meeting. You are welcome to hand me additional comments in writing now or send them via email, and I will share them with the other school committee members. Public comment by residents at this meeting is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between individuals and the school committee. It is an individual's opportunity to express an opinion on issues within the school committee's authority. Our role is to listen carefully to what you have to share with us tonight. Clapping, cheering, calling out, or any other noise following a speaker is not allowed. A reminder that if not following the policy, this may cut into your time. Additionally, I want to remind the members of the school committee, sitting next to me, that when making a point of order, please address your concern to the chair initially rather than to the speaker. So, let's start with Mr. Savoy. Come right up to the mic and state your name, street address, and speak into the microphone.
Wilfred Savoy, 41 Chestnut Street. I just wanted to acknowledge the school committee and the administration for including additional wage and salary information in the 2024 budget. I'm referring to page 21. I just wanted to acknowledge that and to express my appreciation for that. I hope going forward that there's going to be support for additional information by cost center and also by historical data, similar to the budgets of the other town departments. I think this is the only way that you, as school committee people and citizens, can really feel confident that the dollars are being spent toward the goals that have been established by the school district, so, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Conklin?
Boyd Conklin, 8 Water Street. So Alan Falcon Edinburgh, the chair's husband, says that the fail school has a five-to-eight-year payback period. And so if the powers that be in Westboro are all on the same page, then I guess the same misinformation, disinformation spin is consistent from the school committee, select board, finance committee, planning board, school building committee, library trustees, library building committee.
Excuse me?
And town manager.
Mr. Conklin, can you please hold on for a moment? If you're going to talk to the school committee, stick to the school committee, nothing else. That's what you're here for, is to speak to the school committee, not about other boards at this meeting.
I was just mentioning that the school committee seems to be on the same page as all the other boards in town. That was the point.
We are a separate committee. Stick to that.
So it's about the school committee and everybody in sync. That's the statement.
They are distinct committees, and we will stick to that they are distinct committees. You can continue, please address the school committee. Okay?
It may be that the story of the school committee is what the storytellers think is the most expedient way to pull one over on the citizens of Westboro. One example is the high school net zero Westboro sustainability that the school committee says they have no purview over. Just as in the classroom, fear must be instilled in all the students that the earth is unlivable. I can't get a spot to promote the actual science at this high school energy fair, like I did last year when it was held at Milpon. The vaccine has just been allowed on the childhood schedule, so the school committee, what will they be doing? Will they be saying that the gene therapy vaccine is mandatory for the schoolchildren to attend school? What a horror show. So the world corporatocracy tells the federal government, and then the feds tell the state, and the state tells Westboro, and Westboro School Committee tends to do whatever has been told by the upper echelon agencies of the world. I'm wondering if there's any original thought in this town. Thank you, and thanks for your service.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Savoy, as well. Is there anyone else here for citizens' requests? Seeing none, we'll move on to our next agenda item, and that is the Mass Partnership for Youth Poster Contest Award recipient.
Thank you. I'll do a brief introduction. We were pleased to receive information about one of our students in eighth grader, and I'll speak about in just a second, having been honored with an honorable mention in a very competitive contest, and I'll let the people that are going to present this to her do the celebratory information and sharing. I think it works with just some of the pieces I was sharing earlier around our work on the Veterans More Memorial, our presentation of fine arts throughout the town as requested, and the service that our students are continually providing to participate at the town level and to give back. And I think it feels really good that we see the fine arts arm of design already coming to fruition here, you see, as eighth grader art is really stepping up. So Mahai Sri Vastava is here with us, I believe, tonight. Do you want to come up front? We're going to talk and say nice things about you. So it's very safe for you to come up. And I would also then like to greet and welcome the members from the Massachusetts Partnership for Youth Poster Contest, Tony Parentazi and Margie Daniels. I'm going to let them come up and speak about Mahai's poster and do the award.
Thank you so much. It's really an honor and a privilege to be here at your school committee meeting with such good news about Westboro. Massachusetts Partnerships for Youth is a nonprofit organization. Our mission is prevention and intervention in matters of health and safety for youth. And we've been an organization serving some districts in Massachusetts since 2009, I'm sorry, since 1998, and we've had this contest going since 2009. So this is a longstanding endeavor on our So, this is a longstanding endeavor on our part. This year, we had 328 posters submitted. So, the fact that your poster stood out with so many entries is really a great credit to you, and also to your school, and to Westboro as a whole. So, we're here today to congratulate you. We have a copy of your beautiful poster, which talks about no plastics in the ocean. And the theme for this year was the world, the earth loves you, love it back. And you did a beautiful job. We had a panel of judges that were school administrators, art teachers, law enforcement, and community leaders, and they particularly loved the three-dimensional aspect of your poster. The art teachers, who are our biggest critics usually, always, really, really praised this poster, that it had great artistic value. We look certainly at the message. The message and the content are very important, but we also look at the artistic piece. And like I say, you really stood out of the group, so we came here to congratulate you. And we have a certificate and a gift that we'll be mailing to you. So, congratulations. And Tony Parentazi is the president of our Board of Directors. I don't know, Tony, if you wanted to say anything?
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. I just want to say congratulations. Your art is wonderful, and we have a copy of the poster for you to take home.
And I wonder, Mahai, if you could talk a little bit about just the conceptual design and just a little bit about what your motivations were when you, you know, tell us a few things about how you developed your poster.
So, my family has, like, really loved the ocean, and I also love it a lot. So, I wanted to incorporate something to do with the ocean, and I've noticed stuff about plastic pollution, especially in the ocean, and how it's affecting animals. And the theme of the poster was the earth loves you, love it back. So, I kind of wanted to, like, show, like, a response to how to, like, stop plastics in the ocean, which is the recycling bin. So, I wanted to show the ocean in the recycling bin being healthy and full of, you know, wildlife, and if it's in the recycling bin. And on the other side, I just said ways how to reduce plastic pollution to spread awareness about plastic in the ocean.
Why don't you read what you have there, just because I think it's really insightful to how you built your poster?
So, it says on the side, it says that ways to reduce plastic pollution are recycle plastic, not littering, participating in beach and river cleanups, and avoiding using products that contain microbeads.
Thank you. It's a beautiful poster, so we want to congratulate you. And I wonder if one of our favorite things is, of course, a photo op, and I see that your, I believe your dad is here. So, maybe what we could do is have the Mass Partnership colleagues that are here and you, we could get a photo for you, and that would be great. I'm going to take one, and we'll make sure you get them with you, and.
I like the fact that you not only said no plastics in ocean, but you also gave some solutions to it.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Did you show it to the audience, so they know what it is that we're looking at?
It's on camera.
It is on camera.
Okay.
That's not the audience I was talking to.
Let's do a photo. Why don't you come up here, and we'll do all of you. You can actually hold your poster. We'll do two of you, it'd be great. And we'll, like, if you have to, like. Sure. You're welcome. All right, we can back you up a little bit, so you get some school committee in the background there.
In case they're far.
Yes, you can. They love that. They're very happy. They're very happy. Be screened out, and it's a lot. All right, I'm going to start by having you guys look over here first. I'm going to do what my kids tell me. I put a portrait code, so you all look better.
One. Thank you.
One more, and I have another one for me, because I have a picture in it. So, thank you so much. Thank you very, very much.
Congratulations.
All right, and you take this one, or do we keep this one?
We take that one back for our board meeting.
We will be returning it to you after the June board meeting of the Board of Directors of NPY, so we'll be returning it to you.
And you're a fairly new member, and I really want to thank you for becoming part of our organization. We've enjoyed having you so much. And to have a winner from Westboro is huge. Like I say, it really stood out of the group of so many different posters, so congratulations.
Thank you very much. Who owns this?
It stays here. It was here. Yep.
Anyone want to say any words?
I want to give it away as a free gift.
And for those of you that came, I just always say, we always try to put presentations early, and we don't want you to feel that you have to stay. We know many of you have homework and family events. We also love attendance at our meetings, so feel free to stay. But if you want to head out, again, thank you so much for joining us tonight.
Thank you for inviting us.
Thank you.
Take care, you guys.
That was exciting. All right. So, our next agenda item, we have some DECA representatives with us tonight. We're going to have them come forward, but I just want to mention what DECA is. It's an organization that prepares emerging leaders and entrepreneurs for careers in marketing, finance, hospitality, and management in high schools and colleges around the globe. And they specifically have, like, pieces of their mission, like academically prepared for, you know, achieving high, achieving leaders, as I see before us, community-oriented, professionally responsible, and experience, creating experienced leaders. And so, it's great to have DECA representatives. They're a club at our high school, and we're so glad you're here to tell us a little bit about your experiences with DECA. We've been, certainly, the committee itself has had a couple of what we call field trip reviews of your conference, you know, the yearly conference for DECA, but we appear to be big supporters of DECA. So, please state your name and speak into the microphone, and tell us, share with us.
All right, well, thank you. You explained that beautifully. I'm Abby Kranis, and I'm a junior at Westboro High School.
Hi, I'm Daphne Cabrera, and I'm a senior at the high school. We are members of the DECA chapter, and we just wanted to inform you all about our club and the importance of career in technical education.
So, as you said, DECA is a business organization that provides students with the skills, opportunities, scholarships, and knowledge for careers in marketing, finance, hospitality, and management in high schools and colleges around the globe through competitions, campaigns, presentations, events, fundraisings, partnerships, real-life experiences, and more.
So, at Westboro High School, our club is a second-year chapter, but we have had a 200% increase in membership this year, which has made us the fourth-biggest club in the high school behind the class office and student council. We have earned 23 competitive awards this year and been recognized on the state and international level for our business education advocacy. We have also attended muscular dystrophy association charity events, started a gold-certified in-house design company, fundraised over $2,000, and built mentor relationships with alumni and community leaders.
So, there is a lot that students can gain from participating in DECA, such as helping students develop career skills, especially in business and communications, such as leadership, problem-solving, creativity, and critical thinking. It also allows us to practice communication, teamwork, and networking with dozens of colleges and students from across the state, country, and the world. And lastly, we are able to raise money for charities and sell sponsorships to local businesses.
So, Career and Technical Education Month is a public awareness campaign that takes place each February. Its purpose is to celebrate the value of CTE and the achievements and accomplishments of CTE programs across the country, such as business classes and clubs like DECA.
So, business education contributes heavily to and is so crucial to a thriving economy as it allows for informed decision-making and necessary leadership skills. This is why we think it is so important to advocate for things like career and technical education, because it will eventually translate into a functional society. Also, it's important to consider that entrepreneurship is at the heart of the American economy, so individuals who are successful in their business practices will in turn create more jobs and improve productivity. And this concept especially applies to local economies such as Westboro.
Finally, we wanted to thank all of you for your continued support for our chapter in the last two years. We are so grateful to have a school committee that understands the value of our mission and allows us to pursue our interests in business while still in high school.
Thank you for taking the time to hear about DECA and career in technical education. Does anybody have any questions regarding the DECA club, our mission, or Career and Technical Education Month?
Steve, we'll start with Steve and go to Kristen.
Thank you. Thank you so much for sharing. I heard you mention that the club has been in existence for two years, so I'm curious about your own journeys in that two-year time period. If you sort of were along for the whole two-year ride, or if you've joined just the last year, sort of your own place in the history of the DECA chapter at Westboro. I'd love to hear that.
Yeah, so initially, DECA was not a chapter here in Westboro. And so, when our business, the business teacher, Mr. Potorf, our advisor, kind of came up to us and asked us to join DECA, we weren't familiar with it, and neither was our school. But I did have an interest in, you know, entrepreneurship, business management, and so I saw it as an opportunity to get involved with something in business. So then, my partner that I compete with, we founded DECA at Westboro.
Yeah, so this is actually my first year on DECA. I did not join last year because I had a lot going on, but then when I saw everything that Doug was able to accomplish last year, I really wanted to be a part of it, and I really love it. I do so much for it now, and it's really a big part of my life.
I asked for selfish reasons, because I work at a school where students are putting together a DECA chapter, and I have volunteered to be the advisor. And so, I was sort of fishing for information, because they approached me to advise it, whereas in your scenario, it was the opposite, where the teacher approached. But, so I've looked into it, and it's such a phenomenal organization. So, one, I applaud you, you individually, for the amount of work that you've done in order to take a non-existent, in order to build a chapter. So, the students that I'm working with, the legwork that they're doing, you know, that's a real accomplishment. So, both of you, thank you so much for sharing, and the work that you're doing, it shows a level of accomplishment and maturity that is really impressive. So, you know, kudos to both of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm wondering if you could just briefly share a little bit about some of the competitions that you have, like, how, you know, it's about business and entrepreneurialship, so how do you compete in that?
Okay, so a big part of DECA is the competitive side of it. So, there's a few different ways to compete, but kind of the main way is in role play. So, you'll either do it by yourself or in a partnership. And you have a category. So, personally, my category is travel and tourism. And they give you a scenario, like, they tell you, like, you are the marketing manager at this company, and they tell you a situation, and you have 10 or 30 minutes, depending on what event you're doing, to kind of come up with a solution for whatever business issue they present you with, and you present it to a judge. And there's also a test that you take before the role play, so your test score also factors into your total score.
So, I imagine that takes a lot of preparation just to get ready for that.
Raghu?
Yeah, about mentorship. Do you have enough mentors at your club to kind of help? Because mentoring is a big piece of entrepreneurship. I mean, I'm an entrepreneur myself, so without mentoring, I wouldn't have gone where I'm here now. But mentorship is a big part of being an entrepreneur, so try to catch as many mentors and, you know, successful people.
So, Raghu's volunteering to be a mentor.
I could volunteer.
There you go. You just picked up an advisor supporter.
But there are many, many good businesses in Westboro. We could have field trips, see how they work, you know, talk to people who have started business and been successful, you know.
We're always looking for more mentors, if you want to help.
Would love to.
Yeah, there's always room for improvement. We're always looking for more guidance.
Steve?
Besides the role-play issues that you mentioned, do you have any actual experience associated with the real-world business at this point yet? In terms of, you know, your effort to be, if you will, training for a leadership role, do you have any, let's call it a co-op experience with a real business somewhere?
So, we do sell sponsorships to local businesses. So, we have met with local businesses like Red Heat Tavern, Vivacity, The Nutrition Place, and we have hosted fundraisers together. So, that kind of entails meetings and kind of, like, managing events.
Excellent. Great.
So, one more piece of information I want to share is, there's a group called Thai Boston, and they run a year-long entrepreneurship program for Thai. They call, they call a subgroup called Thai Youth. They cater for high school students, where it's a year-long program. You join into that program, and they teach you step by step, from marketing and sales and finance, everything that's involved into giving you the basic skills of becoming an entrepreneur show. So, it's a great program to look at. That's one of the things that.
Yeah, I think so.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much. This is a near dear to my heart. I went and got my MBA in entrepreneurship at Babson, and that's all we did, was read case study after case study, hundreds, if not thousands, in a couple of year time. And it sounds like what you do in the competition are business case studies on steroids. You need to be able to read it, and then 10 to 30 minutes later, you have a solution to the problem. And that's what it's all about, is understanding how business runs so that you can come up with solutions and invent, be innovative, about how to make it something else, the better, you know, improved mousetrap, is what we used to call it.
It must be interesting when you get a feedback from a judge, because I'm sure that many times the answers you've given don't meet the test, and they tell you what was wrong and what you have to do about it. Actually, failure is one of the best things you can have to learn how to do something correctly, and doing it at this level is not only entertaining, but certainly a learning experience that you don't forget. So, it sounds like a very good program.
So, thank you very much for joining us tonight, and we look forward to an update next year on the number of competitions and the growth of the organization as part of our updates. So, thank you very much for joining us tonight. We also allow you to leave, because we are sure you have homework and things to do. We want to thank you for being with us. I will say that, you know, we always look at what comes before a school committee, what purpose it serves, what's the, what's the arc of information that we're providing to the community. I think it's very important that we're often looking at academic work around high achievement. We're looking at letting you know where our graduation rates are, where our performance rates are, how well our budget is working. But there's a whole arm of the vast extension of all of the other essential networks that make Westboro and the public school system a unique educational experience, and it is alive and well and vibrant and rebounding from really the harm of several years of having been interrupted. You see these clubs. You see a giant robotics club, which might compete with you for one large organization. We have math clubs, and we have fine arts organizations. It's just the vast array of student-led, adult-supported designs. And I think in Westboro, it really is student-run, adult-supported, and a structure that provides an opportunity for our students to thrive and to find what's special to them and to explore challenging themselves. And so, I think it's important for you to have snapshots of that every once in a while. So, getting the combination tonight of the fine arts award and DECA presenting, you see the expansiveness of the types of experiences that are outside of just the daily academic experience. Thank you very much. Good luck in your competitions, and we look forward to an update soon, okay?
Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you so much for reaching out to us. We're very, it was so exciting to hear from you. So, thanks. And thank you to their club advisor, Mr. Andy Port, is it Potorf?
Yep, Potoff, yep.
Yep. So, we'll move on to our next agenda item. We have a special guest. Latisha Broomfield is here. She is our director of the ELE. Do you call it the ELE program now?
Well, they keep changing the name. I said it when I got her report. I was like, wait, is it ELL? Is it E? You know, we're always, we just do what the state says in terms of names, because they keep sending us documents. So, it's a pleasure to have Latisha come and present to you. She's our new director of ELE and working on supporting a very thriving She's our, uh, new director of, uh, ELE and, uh, working on supporting a very thriving part of our work. And I think you get an annual update, which gives you an opportunity to have year-over-year comparisons to, to the performance work of the district. So it's a pleasure to have her here tonight and I will turn it over to her.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Um, my name is Latisha Broomfield. I've been in the district since 2016, first as a, um, EL teacher at Hastings Elementary School. And of course, this is my first year in this role. I wanted to stop by sharing a quote that's been the theme of our department for the year. "The journey of a thousand miles begins with a single step," from Lao Tzu. Um, this best describes my journey in leading the department, where, um, my focus has been to get to know the teaching staff and also the diversity within the community. And as a department, it also describes our first step of developing a mission statement that kind of defines who we are as a team and who the students are that we service and the diversity of the, that involves.
And you might want to tip that mic towards you just because they're gonna, yeah, there you go. I always, I always just put them both like that. There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, exactly. For our ongoing viewing pleasure in, in months to come.
Okay, I'm going to refocus now. Okay. Okay, so here's our mission statement. We worked on this, um, together, uh, during the beginning, the first part of the year. It took a while to come, come with this, get a, come up with this, but we found that all of our ideas fit into this. The mission of Westboro Public Schools English Language Education Department is to empower English learners. Through accelerated and collaborative language instruction, students will achieve academic success and become responsible, productive, and contributing members of a global community. This is achieved by ensuring equitable access in social and academic settings while preserving and embracing the heritage of language and cultures. So with this, we're building upon a foundation that was already set forth when I came into this role. And by providing the EL students and families, we believe by providing them with the tools they need to succeed, um, they have, they be successful in both academic and social settings. I wanted to include this slide just to illustrate how the population of English learners in nationwide is still, is pretty much around 10% and also represents four, over 400 languages. Um, one thing that I wanted to point out as well is that most English learners are born in the United States, which brings us to Massachusetts. So in Massachusetts, the population of English learners is around 11% and represent over 100, around 100 languages from 160 different countries, with the top languages being spoken as Spanish and Portuguese. So in Westboro, we have a very diverse population of students, which represent almost 20 countries, or just over, around 20 countries. Our population of EL students is pretty much consistent over the past seven years, are averaging around 10% of the total Westboro student population. The data that, um, we're reporting for this year, for the 2022, 2023 school year, is, was as of October 1st, 2022. But since that date, we've received 29 new students to the districts who have been identified as English learners. We currently have 426 students who have been identified as English language learners. And when a new student arrives to the district or registers in the district, families are provided with a home language survey in English or in their native language. Now, some of the students come to us with a designation of ES, English language learner already. And those who do not come to us, we screen them. If there's any indication of another language on the home language survey, we, our EL teachers screen them either with an online assessment or for kindergarten and for kindergartners and preschoolers, we use a one-to-one assessment of oral language. So students who meet the qualifying scores are entered into the program. Students then take an annual English language proficiency test to access for ELs 2.0. Um, that determines if the students meet the exit criteria. If they do, then they are reclassified as former English learners and monitored for the next four years, meaning that if we see that they have continually making progress, we continue to monis, monitor them. If they're not making progress, they can re-enter the program. So 273 students have been reclassified and are monitored or have completely exited after the four years of monitoring. We have 19 licensed ESL teachers in the district who instruct the students across the district. So we have about over 40 different languages that are spoken by our students. So our students are culturally and linguistically diverse. So the top languages are consistent with the state being Spanish and Portuguese. However, almost 14% of our students speak a language that is unique and those are the students that are classified as others with 13.9%. So these are the languages that the other, almost 14% speaks. So you can see that there's a lot of different languages represented. With 426 English learners in the district, each school's service delivery model was reflective of the students' needs. This year, we, um, assessed and identified 54 preschool English language learners. So the preschool, the preschool teachers deliver language-rich instruction every day, all day. So they don't have necessarily an EL teacher, but I do support them by, through consultations and, um, provided intervention services for the students. Hastings has the highest population of EL students, followed by Mill Pond and Armstrong. Many English language learners come to us with little to no experience with the English language. And Hastings also has the highest number of new English speakers with 35 students, while Westboro High School actually has 25 students that are new to the English language.
Can I ask you a question?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I can understand why Hastings and even Mill Pond has some, but Westboro High School, did they just join this district?
Westboro High School has had a lot of new students this year that are identified as Level One, new speakers.
Is it always?
Those are, those are not students that have been with us for many years. Most, most students exit within four...
Four to six years, yes.
Four to six years.
Mm-hmm. That's actually my next...
Yep.
Next one, yeah. So typically, it takes four to six years for English learners to exit the program and to be able to be proficient with academic and social language. Um, students who start with us in kindergarten and first grade, they usually are exited by sec, by third or fourth grade. The number of teachers at each school is based upon need and the preschool is supported by me. I give them consultations and we are starting intervention groups for the preschoolers who will be entering kindergarten in the district next year with the hope that they will be proficient before entering kindergarten.
Can I interject something?
Yeah.
On preschool, the state doesn't require that they receive direct services and in part, that's because they're like sponges in terms of learning language and all the kids in the preschool are learning language. And so that's why you see the zero there in terms of staff.
Yeah, and the, the teachers, the classrooms are very language-rich.
But on the same basis, it's the best place to start.
Yeah, exactly.
That's what...
Yep.
True.
Because they are sponges.
They're, they're all learning, they're all learning English together.
That's good. That probably can graduate out in two years.
We're hoping to graduate then before they get to kindergarten.
Latisha has very high standards. She's like, no time to waste.
Okay, so, um, we're very proud of the programs that we offer in the department and continue to offer, uh, to enhance the education experience of both the students and the families. Beth Buena Costa, uh, who is a high school teacher, EL teacher, she coordinates the adult English classes, which for the spring semester this year had 70, 73 registered adult English learners with six stu, six teachers. Last July, our EL Summer Academy, Summer School Academy was coordinated by Hastings EL teacher, Sarah Willoughby, and had 68 students, five teachers, and four paraprofessionals. Our After School Academy at Gibbons is led by Ryan McDonald and Sarah Thomas. They're both Gibbons teachers. And, uh, um, Westboro High School students, Alkeia Connolly, Beth, and Jackie Quello, they offer after-school help on a drop, on a drop-in basis and they also are club advisors.
So this adult English academy, is it after-school?
The adult English takes place, the, well, we're starting, the, the second semester starts on March 1st, after vacation. So it's once a week for one hour. We're still on Zoom. We plan to go back in person next year. So right now, we're still on Zoom, but the second semester starts on March 1st. You're all welcome to pop in. I teach the Level Four and we actually have had success with the Level Four. They're the, the students who need to practice speaking and listening, um, with, um, be, being hired in the district as subs and paras. So we've had a lot, maybe four or five of our students who have graduated, not graduated, they still come to us, but are now working in the district. So this brings us to, I didn't click it. Our Curriculum Enhancement Committee, this is something that we started this year within the department from the Title III grant. Um, the, the Curriculum Enhancement Curri, Committee is led by teachers in the district, EL teachers, Eileen Harvey, Liz Enriquez, Ryan McDonald, Casey Finch, Alkeia Connolly, and Evelyn S. Barrios. So the focus is building, the, we focus on building upon what we already have in department and using our experience and our knowledge to develop department policies, curriculum, and tools that will support our students and families and the content area teachers. So right now, we're working on developing a newcomer curriculum. So when students arrive to the country, we can give them a fast track to acquire survival English, to get the service, get the education that they need. We're also working towards developing a toolkit for content area teachers and developing intake procedures for new EL students to the district. The English Language Parent Advisory Council, the ALPAC. Um, the goal of that committee is to engage the families in their children's educational journey. Right now, we're in a rebuilding phase after the pandemic. So we're right, we've had two meetings so far. We have 14 members and we're actively recruiting more parents to join that committee. Um, it's parent-led with the support of Liz Enriquez and me. We address the, the parents', um, the parents' concerns. We're working on building connections between the district and the parents of the EL students. We're working on a event for May where we have answers for the questions that they've asked. We have a long list of things that they want more information on. So we're inviting maybe you all to come to that event.
Happy to.
The ALPAC is, uh, also, you know, an opportunity then to take time and allow families time to understand the infrastructure of how all the different groupings work in the schools and then they overlap with our PGAs and the other organizations and participate in those as well. But it's also gives them an opportunity to have an environment where they can get up close to understand more about the other larger pieces of the framework of public schooling and, you know, within a comfortable environment. I think that's built some really good bridges.
What's going on in the community as well.
Definitely.
Mm-hmm. The, um, I feel like one of the biggest initiatives that we've been able to push through with the help of Amber and Daniel are, um, the use of parent liaisons in the community, in the schools. So our parent liaisons, their main focus is bridging the gap between the, the parents of EL students and the schools and helping them to understand, uh, what's going on in the schools, to communicate with the families and connect them to agencies or community organizations as needed. Um, they have been very helpful in us reaching out and coordinating with families and getting them the things that they need. So I want to end with my quote again. "The journey of a thousand miles begins with a single step." We are on a journey, my department and myself, um, to empower our English learners and the families by providing them with the tools that they need to be successful in school and in the community. We have a lot, uh, many, many more steps to go before we've completed our journey as educators, but we're off to a good start and we're on the right track. So with that, I say thank you and are there any questions?
Um, just a comment. So thank you first for your presentation. And so it was interesting to see, um, where our students are coming from, our ELE students, um, and, uh, how that other, I'm fascinated by that other category this year. You know, I've always seen the Spanish and Portuguese near the top, but that is new for me to see then all those native languages included in that. Um, and what a, what a gift and challenge that can be for our community.
Definitely.
Yeah. And also if you'd like, um, I would volunteer myself to attend an ALPAC meeting if you ever wanted us, one of us to come and just explain.
We do have one coming up on March 6th.
Okay, explain about, um, well, just explain about school committee and how kind of our role in the community and, and with what we do with the schools.
That would be great.
Okay, yeah. I'll get in touch with you through Amber.
Yes, definitely. Thank you.
Yeah, in, in fact, uh, to follow up on that, I, I'll be reaching out to you. I'd, I'd like to attend the, the ALPAC meeting as well. I'm the chair of the, the town CPAC. And, y- you know, the ALPAC, CPAC convergence is a community that is, you know, one of the most marginalized.
Yes.
Um, and so any opportunity to, to, um, manage and navigate through that, the complexity of those two intersecting issues, um, is, um, you know, a, a valuable endeavor. So I, um, uh, look forward to, uh, attending that, that meeting and, and hearing all the, the great work.
Thank you. That would be awesome.
One other, just quick comment, um, the data that you presented, it's fascinating to see that, as, as Kristen said, that, that other as now the third group because it just reveals the complexity and the impossibility of teaching to such a, a diverse group of, of, of learners and yet the necessity, the challenge, precisely as Kristen said. Um, so, uh, you know, seeing that the numbers correspond to a lot of the, the, the trends across the, the Commonwealth and just how difficult that, that third category is. Um, so thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Steve?
Yeah, I was wondering if in your, um, adult English language, um, let's call it a course, I guess, um, do you deal with government paperwork, like getting a license and things like that that have government speak, which is usually unintelligible in the first instance?
In my, at my level that I teach, I don't because my, my students have English proficiency. They just need to practice. But I'm not quite sure at Level One and Two, that might be where, or maybe Three, where they're talking more about those things. But my, my students, they just need to practice speaking. They've asked for like resume training, how to write a resume, interviewing skills. So they've asked for things like that, that we've given them and pushed them back into the workforce.
Mm-hmm. That's great. Thanks.
So, um, I, one, want to thank you for your slide deck. I think it was very accessible. I just felt it was, the infographics really, um...
Inefficient.
So inefficient, exactly.
Steve likes efficient reports.
Um, I am wondering, um, for the future, there's an area, you know, a couple of data things I would love to see in the future. Um, one might be layering the data on exit rates and the performance on access testing.
Okay.
I think that would be really helpful for the committee to see. Uh, one, for also us to get a start of a comparison, you know, of a previous, you know, whether we have the data from previous years or whether it's simply to show what the program really does. I mean, I recognize we hear things like, uh, they exit out in four years. That gives us a data point, but I think we, we could use some more specifics that we could really...
Yeah, absolutely.
Grab on to.
I guess I would comment on that, that, that the purpose of this is to, to get people who are able to function in our society to the best of their level. And that's the point that I would like to see us have more information on. I don't care about the rest of the statistics. What I'm interested in is the se, the success for the people, not only to, to be in the program, but to be successful in, in their life's purpose. So...
I think too, to, to complement a couple of pieces on that, you have students exiting within the framework of their time with us and then successfully completing Westboro High School graduation, which is a rigorous standard, as well as, and again, you get the branch of with the increase in the high schooler entrance of low English-speaking students who require a lot of support. That's been a change over the last couple of years for us, taking the last three. So it puts a lot of pressure on the escalation of how quickly you're trying to move those students while they're embedded and also trying to pass high school. That is probably the highest pressure point of intervention for us. I think the team is very, very strong, just to give a shout out to Latisha's team at the high school. They're both keeping students afloat on content while they're also then instructing the English and, uh, their success rate remains very high. So as we look at like exit rates, I think looking specifically at those high school students who come in, who have that low proficiency level, how do we do with them across the span of high school? Because the trajectory from there is out into the field for college or work. So I think it's, it's an interesting window. So I think it's an interesting window. The younger ones coming along are actually, before they exit, obviously then we're tracking them for four years beyond their exit, are thriving in the school setting and, you know, we know the benchmarks for that. I would say one other piece of, I think, information that's helpful as we look at the data to see that our L population requiring intervention support is stable. So is the staffing number that's stable and has been now for about six years. So, you know, we'll often hear people say, wow, the Westboro's changing. We're having all these students. I'm like, actually, that's the standard norm at this point. In the nine years that I've been here, and she tracked back six, but this is the stable identity that we've had six to 10 years now in terms of the demographic of our community. And so the programming is stable now and the numbers and the exit rates are giving us that kind of data to show that this is just part of Westboro Performance Benchmark. So I appreciated that you folded in the historical data to show just the typical norms of the schools. So thank you for adding that.
So is it always around 50 students in the high school?
That was the increase.
How many students, what'd you say?
Is it always around 50 students in the high school?
This year it is, but I met with the high school L teachers today. So that number will change slightly if the eighth grade stays. The eighth grade is that will go to ninth grade next year. If they stay the same, that number, I think it's 27. It will increase the students in the high school because right now, the senior class is only eight L students. So it will change the number slightly. So it really depends on how many are coming up from our school.
But in terms of move-ins, where we've had more students coming into district, where they've had more complexity of English up at the upper elementary, I mean, upper middle school and high school level, we'll just start tracking the trend a little bit more. Maybe we can add some layers of data for you.
Because the students that we've been getting, of the 29 new, they're students that have had interrupted education and may not necessarily come with literacy or have been to school for a continuous amount of time. So it changes the instruction a little bit.
Yeah. No, that's helpful to look at it from the higher grades to graduation rate and to see if we have any support needs that need to be addressed and.
Well, typically, Latisha's done a nice job, as did Maeve before, to rotate the staffing where the numbers are. So when you have support staff, just like literacy moves around, special ed support moves around based upon the numbers, because those are layered in service enhancements to support a need. So I think at this point, we're really looking as a district, and you heard this during budgeting, for a stability of performance numbers and also staffing numbers and that they're adjusting year to year based upon the movement through the district.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you so much for coming.
Thank you for having me.
So action-wise, this is a report you receive as an annual update. You don't need to vote it, but it's just a note that you need, that are, it's not an action item. It's an update as we look at the structure of school committee. And then next year, you'll get her next stage of data, which will be good.
Okay, so we'll move on to our next agenda item. And Latisha, don't feel like you have to stay for this, you know, exciting rest of the agenda. Preschool tuition memo.
So I'm going to move into, I think this is a fairly short presentation with a recommendation on my part for, I think, what is an appropriate increase to the preschool tuition. I sent you the spreadsheet of research that they used. They did comparables in our community and looked at the increase of what is it costing to go to preschool? And I don't want to pull all that data up here, but gave it to you as a context that we used to lead to this recommendation. The, what is it costing to educate a preschooler across private settings like Ms. Tanya's, E. Montessori, Knowledge Beginnings? And then we also looked at preschool costs in our comparative districts, Shrewsbury, Northborough, Southborough, Hopkinton, to understand the context of what we're providing structurally and is our cost being requested for that service appropriate? So we want to remain cost-effective as a public school setting and within reach for people, but we also want to, you know, move the target as needed. So the last review of this was 2018. We kept our prices and our preschool work stable through COVID. And then coming out into this phase, it seemed appropriate to now do an update. So I reviewed all of the data, as did Dr. Sherri Stevens, Director of Student Services, who oversees the preschool program, and then Michelle Plermo, the Director of the Early Childhood Center, and David Gordon, the Director of Finance. In looking at the costs, we're still very competitively on the low end. And we also are one of the few programs, when you looked at that data, did you notice one of the few programs that offers five days a week? So proportionally, we're offering a longer day. We're offering multiple educators, certified teachers in the classroom, and five days a week. So clearly, the component of the preschool program is very robust in comparison to some of the other programs that we benchmarked against. So I just want to acknowledge the quality again. And you see, when we can enroll Ls and they get their typical opportunity for rich embedded language, we get the, we get the trajectory of their development going in the right direction, which always long-term has cost savings and performance-saving benchmarks, all of that. So at this time, I would be recommending that we do a 10% increase. Again, I think that would be, if you look at that, it would bring the tuition rate to $360 a month for the half-day option and 880 a month for the full-day option. Those again are competitive numbers and have not been raised since 2018. And I would see us leaving them there again for a stretch. I think the next most common cost-effective program that was anywhere near us was running close to $10,000 a year for full-day programming. So this leaves us underneath that around, you know, 9,000, under 9,000 still, but I think appropriate to our program.
I think the, I think the amounts that you just shared are the current. I think the 10% increase would be.
Sorry, sorry. Oh, thank you. Read it out loud.
396 for half-day and 968.
Thank you. I apologize. I'm like reading sideways and I didn't pull it up on my screen. I apologize. So yes, that would still leave us at under that benchmark of 10,000 for the full-day program, which again is running longer in five days a week than our next best comparative at the 968 a month. And then the 396 for the half-day program. And again, this program provides, the tuition provides for staffing offset, is carried in a revolving account, pays for staffing, materials, and program support. And so at this time.
And I was gonna say, like you said, it's five days, not four. And all of the, so many others have three days or four days of programming.
So is it, what is it, parallel to the school year or is it all year round?
Ten months.
Ten months, school year. We do offer summer programming, but they do it separately as a summer program cost, like we do with all the other summer programming.
Yeah, some of the private preschools are 12 months, but they run it more like a.
I only bring it up because, you know, obviously for people with children and both parents working, you know, it's that other months that they need to cover. So as long as somehow or another, these kids have another place to go for, so their parents can continue to work.
Yeah, we offered, I mean, they don't, we don't do, we have, I mean, community ed is certainly an arm of support for students that need summer programming. And they offer a full-day program, but not until kindergarten. So last year, Michelle's team offered summer programming as an extended opportunity to have more structure for the week through summer.
How successful was that?
Anything they offer is pretty much enrolled quickly. I mean, there's a waiting list. There's a continual waiting list for the preschool. You know, we moved to open the eighth classroom this year and we will sustain that into next year using the revolving account without needing to have any budgetary increase and can sustain that against the tuition costs so that it doesn't impact the budget. We're certainly cognizant of the fact, like, we're not looking to raise these prices. We understand certainly that the impact on families and daycare structures as well as schooling. And I think we also have to stay within a competitive-striking distance of the other school settings, given that, you know, we need to maintain our programming.
It's time for a motion?
Yep. We're ready for a motion to approve, well, you may, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I would. I would make the motion that we increase the fee schedule from, by 10% over what the current schedule is.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Well, I'll certainly provide an update and feedback. Michelle will be able to keep me updated on, you know, the transition of that change for the fall. We'll make sure we start, they start enrollment soon. So they want to make sure that as families are looking for options, that they understand where our cost impacts will be. So thank you very much.
Great. Okay, we'll move right on to our next agenda item, which is Budget and Town Meeting Update. And we've all received a draft of the warrant. It was updated a little bit late, meaning we received one and then there was another draft that was put in and.
Did she upgrade it to the six? Yeah. Did she surprise you?
Do you have permissions? I asked, I had to request the permission.
Oh, you had to from Andrea? I apologize.
It's version six.
It's version six.
So I'm going to go ahead and open it here since I was not as able to read off of the screen there. Hang on, let me just get in here.
I don't know which one I printed.
That's okay. So a couple purposes in this update, which is as we move into the transition between now and the town meeting, it becomes important for us to keep a standing update here so that we have a standing agenda item available for us to be nimble, to be able to be responsive, to have any discussion you want to have leading into town meeting. So as Steve leaves the building project available so that he can update you and get actionable items if needed quickly, we leave a standing item between now and town meeting so that we can update each other and discuss things we need to discuss. So I'm just going to get this open here for a second so I can follow along. Sorry. Two important things, and Steve provided an update on this. All right. So the items that I want to review with you would be to have. Daniel, scroll it down until you hit the capital section where we're going to look at the warrant article related to Hastings.
Article nine, O, P, and Q.
Article nine, O, P, and Q. So right now, all of the capital articles are housed within the Capital Planning Committee framework. And so there was a quality discussion at the Finance Subcommittee looking at how to make sure that the articles related to the Hastings would allow us to bring all of these under one authorization so that the project can move forward without separate silos of money, which can make it very hard to pay bills when you're not sure what they belong to. Do they belong to the HVAC system? Do they belong to the ADA upgrade? And it can get incredibly confusing. Leah and Kristy.
That's a misstatement. I mean, the bid is the bid. And this, you know, everything is included in two pieces, so.
Yes. The bid is the bid. I'm just talking about the statement of, let me just walk through it. I agree with you. I'm just saying that what they want to do is make sure that the, all of the different articles that have been voted for funding are then.
You mean the old ones?
Yes, approved into one singular warrant article that allows all of the past voted funds to be in one pool of money. So that we can move forward with the project without separate piles of warrant articles that can be hard to track. So for example, if you, if we want, so they wanted us to step through this language and to think it through so that it would streamline our process. It would also streamline the tracking work that we need to do as we implement and it would, it would allow the funding allocations to be smoother. So as we look through this together, it would basically, and I think they had, I think it's well-written right now. And I just want to, hang on, let me get down there, cue. I just want to give you, I want to put it on your radar. I want to ask you to like look at it. I wanted to walk you through what it is and, and say that they, you know, again, council always looks at it for proper language. But what it asks is to take Article 10, basically, which was voted in 2019, which is the funding for the HVAC improvements. And it takes the other appropriation of the March town meeting appropriation for the improvements. And it asks to put all of them into one article along with the voted completion of the article that will come forward. So, you know, I think if you look at the article information, it indicates approval of this article will allow the town to use previously appropriated money and borrow additional money in order to improve the HVAC system and make accessibility improvements at Hastings School. So it just wants to put all of that into one singular finance system, one article. Now, I think the language is clear and they just are asking for us to read it in depth and between now and the next school committee meeting. So this is just an actionable item, asking you to look at it again. And then I figured you and Steve and I could go through it up closely. And then this would be the language and then we would have the motion for the article. So the motion for the article will be related to the bid, and I'm going to talk about that in a minute. So this is just the request to basically bring the additional funds into the same article. Okay? I think it's pretty cleanly written. I know that at the Finance Subcommittee, they felt like it made sense. And that was AFC was there and Select Board Chair to kind of review the warrant and make sure that things are moving forward in a logical way. And their opinions were that this was logical. I think that the motion, and then I want to talk about the motion. Steve shared during his report that the bid is out for the ADA upgrades for accessibility. That bid will be opened on the 20th. It is portioned into two segments, allowing us to be nimble. It has alternates that were organized such that we can look at the approvals and try to make astute decisions. And that bid will be opened on Monday. And then we will look at it and then craft the motion with the correct dollar amounts. So when we met with the Capital Committee, I went back last week, Steve sits on that committee as your representative, and just updated them on the bid process and let them know that as soon as the school committee was able to see and access the number, that Steve would sit and assess kind of the best steps to bring the article forward and what the dollar request would be.
Is there more to cue that's on the next page?
Let's see. It says, yeah, sorry. It's that famous language, you know, and any other related actions therein.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
Yes, yes. So I feel like this is, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I feel like this is asking two things in this one article, right? So to amend the authorizations of both Article 10s from the past and then also to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of money, which we'll have after the bid. So it's two things in one. Um, so it's two things in one. Um, can, so does that make it tricky to try and?
No, it's basically saying, okay, here's your pool of money, plus whatever else is needed to accomplish the article.
So it makes sense to have it all in one and then just.
We've been doing, uh, we've been treating it that way, but we've done it piecemeal by putting those pieces together.
Yep.
The issue has been that the first one had certain language in it, the second one had different language, language in it. And that's where the, where the communication of what, what, uh, pot to take the money out of became. This one will now get rid of that and just simply says, okay, these things now become the source of money to do the purpose of the article.
And then I think, and I think that when they read it, it made sense to them. I didn't present it well to you, sorry.
Oh, it's fine. I was clarifying it.
Um, no, no, right. And I think, um, the, the essential next piece is that we need to have that bid, which will be literally a, a concrete bid awardable to the person who comes in with a low bid and will allow us to take action to town meeting with an absolute, uh, document that would hold the number in place. Um, and so I think, um, the capital committee has been very responsive to appreciating that we've had such a, a quick turnaround to actually have the design happen and have a bid. So I think by process, what will happen will be that, um, we'll keep you updated and that, and, and I'll talk, Lisa, when we meet again, I want to talk about whether or not you guys might want to post a meeting so that if Steve wants to bring you together, and Steve, maybe you and Lisa could talk about this, um, whether or not, you know, when that bid is open, if you want to have these guys together such that you could take action to move forward, you know, and whatever you think makes sense based upon the bid. So just to think about, I'm, you know, again, it'll be on the twentieth that we open that bid, and you might want to post a meeting where you could discuss it and then decide where you want to be. But I'll, I'll defer to you, that Monday.
Of March.
Yep, and then town meeting is that Saturday. So they will be waiting to put the dollar amount into the motion. And Steve wants to open that bid, look at where we are. And then if there's conversation to be had, maybe the two of you should discuss if you want to post a meeting so that you can all.
What, what day of the week is the twentieth?
It's a Monday.
Oh, that's right.
We'll have reorganized this committee on the fifteenth.
No, I know, but the business of the district has to move forward, which is why it's essential that we start to map this stuff out. So it's complicated when there's an election and then two of you are gonna disappear and two are gonna come on, and we have town meeting five days later. So I start to get anxious about just getting everything lined up.
So you're just saying organize in order to post and it will be ready.
Exactly.
I would, I would post a meeting, uh, at a time that's convenient on that Wednesday.
Yeah.
Well, that's good.
Well, and you might want to actually, well, we can talk about this. I, I think, you know, again, you guys can talk about the best timing against that bid and then getting the motion done and getting everything, um, submitted. So we can discuss that. I just wanted to put it on your radar. That's the purpose of this. This is why we keep an open agenda item related to budgets. We can have open and transparent conversation. We can roadmap what you guys want to do, and we can think about, you know, what we need to accomplish in order to be ready for town meeting. Um, I would, so this article, you know, carries the most essential piece to be figured out. The other two are fairly straightforward, and those are the design, um, requests for, and I'm gonna scroll down here. Um, I think they're up above, actually.
Yeah, it's O and P, O and P.
O and P. Um, P requests the design dollars for the Hastings' full roof such that you could complete that design, and then you would have that ready to go out to bid the following year. Um, again, the, the capital committee with their guidance would prefer that we do design, have design that doesn't lose value, because you have literally the engineering design. And then when you're ready to put it out to bid, you can. Um, so this article basically asks to raise appropriate and borrow or transfer funds for the purpose of the design of the new Hastings roof. And then the same language for the Mill Pond restoration. And I want to be clear, the Mill Pond restoration is a cost-saving target because this is the hundred and thirty-two thousand for design so that we can go out to bid for the restoration, which is the seal coat work that they believe it would be then warranted for fifteen to twenty years, extension on the life of the roof. So that allows us, you've been looking at staggering numbers for the cost of roof design. So taking the Mill Pond roof, which is a giant roof, and being able to kick that can down the road with a seal coat restoration of that roof that's got a guarantee for the fifteen to twenty years, um, gives us a window of letting one of the roofs get further down our radar. Because the high school roof is very concerning, it's original. That's literally the tarp and rock, like, design on the top. And then Hastings roof is the same age as Armstrong, the portion we had to replace by emergency repair. So I would say those are your more urgent ones, and doing this work to kick the can further down the road on a large cost to do the roof at Mill Pond will let that go out fifteen years. All right?
So just a little outline on, on what the trick is for all this stuff. Uh, if we back up from the concept of having, uh, an engineering design that you can bid, uh, with the idea that whatever bid we have needs to be a valid bid that we can award, you know, more or less immediately, uh, after town meeting votes. Now, to do that in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the bids are normally only valid for thirty days, which means that the process has to deliver a valid bid that you can award, uh, with town meeting within that thirty days. So that in fact, it's a fixed price, um, concept for the town to vote on, which is not what happened with Hastings in the beginning, and that's why it's been so difficult. So now this structure of going to engineering first, um, with what turns out to be your best estimate of what that cost would be, allows you time, um, to get that, that final document ready to go out to bid, whether, as Amber said, whether you can do it, you know, in the first cycle or whether you have to sit on it for a year. But it doesn't age in the sense of what you need to do. And so that's the trick of this, to make sure that when we go to town meeting in the future, that the real cost of the project is what is presented to town meeting.
And I think over the years that we've done this work, we used to be able to function within rough order of magnitude and carry contingency, and it, you know, it was much better, and we just haven't been able to do that in years.
That's wrong. This, the aberration has been recent.
Yeah, no, I, I was gonna say, we used to be able to do that, and it was a functional.
No, it was never a rough order of magnitude. The town meeting voted a fixed price of money. That's what they did. And if we can't, had to come back and ask for more money, um, you know, we, we suffered the slings and arrows of people who didn't like that.
Yeah, well.
And so now we're back to a process that should work. Even in today's economy, it should work.
All right. So, um, these are our articles, these are our three and our budget. So the budget is obviously just the number drops into the book and we do the presentation. I would say please continue to read these and we'll review them. Again, I'm keeping a, a standing article. And then Lisa, when we do our planning, um, you and Steve can talk about a trajectory of posting a meeting so that we can be responsive to developing a motion as quickly as possible so that we can have it ready for town meeting.
I wanted to just bring up a couple things. One, O, um, I'm not sure why it's not called Mill Pond School Roof Restoration Design. The same way that letter P is called Hastings School New Roof Design.
Okay.
To let people know it's the design.
Yeah.
And the other is that there's a slight typo in number, in letter P in the article information. The second to last sentence says thirty-year-old, it should say thirty-year-old roof. It says thirty-year-of roof. So the spell check did not grab that.
It wouldn't pick it up. It's just, it's the wrong word.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, so I'll send those notes to the town manager as she continues her updates. I encourage you to continue to read the warrant so you have a rhythm for what's going to come before you as voters. Um, and then we'll be shaping our articles, and then we'll develop PowerPoint presentations for all four items, our budget and these three capital items, and be prepared to answer if people call a question. So, um, you know, again, I think the, those articles are going to take, the Hastings ones in particular, will take a preview and review by you uh, to make sure you feel like it's succinct heading into town meeting. So those all have to be developed, and they take time and energy to do well, so we'll start working on those. We also need to, and I'm just calling this out as well, look at the handout that we do at town meeting. In the past, Kristen has taken point on that. Um, we just need to look at whether or not you're rotating that to me or whether or not we can work on it one more year together. We need to figure that out. Um, and I think last year's, um, program was really good. The last two years under your leadership have been excellent. Um, so let's talk offline about that and start to prepare that data.
Okay, sounds good.
So I believe that's the update for tonight on the important pieces of town meeting that require our attention to show up and be ready to go. All right?
Okay.
Thank you.
So next on our agenda is, uh, we're, we've now looking at the third, uh, pass of, um, the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school calendar. And, um, Daniel, you want to walk us through any changes that, since the last one?
Sure. Um, when we talked about it last, I told you that, um, the only change that I anticipated was adding two half-days in March to early releases, because next year, um, we're gonna, we are proposing, um, I shouldn't say proposing, we will be, um, holding two sets of parent conferences, a K-six, one in the fall and another one in the spring, which is new for the Westboro Public Schools. And I presented dated to you earlier, um, at, at an earlier meeting about how this is more in keeping with practice of, um, a number of school districts. It provides us with more contact, um, with the parents to be able to, like, have more of an introductory meeting in, in the fall, talk about issues that may be arising, um, you know, both strengths and concerns about how, as a particular, you know, students are performing. And, um, then have a second meeting as the year has progressed in the spring. And by doing this, um, we would also move to two report cards instead of three. Um, and, um, so what we're putting forward here is a March fifteenth, Friday, March fifteenth, and Friday, March twenty-second, is two early releases. It should say K-six only. Um, so that would be revised before this goes public. So three fifteen and three twenty-two, early release, K-six only. Um, so my apologies that that's not made explicit on this, but we can obviously get that cleaned up as, and you could vote on it with that caveat. But, so that's the only change from what you've seen in the early iterations of the, of the calendar.
Any questions for Daniel? Okay, do we have a motion to approve this twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school calendar with the caveats that Daniel just mentioned?
So move with the caveats as, as submitted by Daniel.
A second from Steve Bachelor, and any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So now, that's five zero, five being present, that passes. Um, now people can look at the calendar with some confidence of what it will look like next year. Yeah, will this be posted on websites?
Say again?
Will this be posted on the school district website? And, because people are already asking.
Tomorrow, tomorrow.
They want to know the first day of school, the last day of school.
There's a reason why we vote this early, yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, so for our last agenda item of the regular session, we have Safe Routes to School Grant. And, um, Amber, did you want to walk us through?
So, yeah, I'm just gonna just, it's a, it's a point of information. There's no voting action you need to take tonight. Um, I just want to celebrate the fact that the time and energy it takes to serve on subcommittees, to put grants forward, to do the legwork of the relationship building. Uh, shout out to Sarah Delay, who started this process rigorously, did the safe routes to school, and then the safety committee that meets in town, inclusive as well of, uh, Chris Payant, who does a nice job, uh, along with the other safety related to police officers, looking at what creates a, a well-run, um, walkable and bike-rideable community. Um, very pleased to see that we did find, we were denied last year, and then this grant is now, uh, has been accepted. The original scope, um, was basically, this is over at the Gibbons Armstrong site of Walk to School, looking to take the sidewalk along Fisher from church to the bridge. And, um, then the scope has been expanded so that it will accommodate a shared use pass, uh, path wider that would allow for bikes and improvements to the crossing sites at church and Milk and Fisher intersection, which is a, a really good one to upgrade since it's complex there. Um, but adding walking paths and wider sidewalks for bike and walkers as well as, um, um, the interface with improving the sidewalks that exist. You know, it looks like that grant's gonna be eight hundred thousand or more. So it's really viable funding support to get that work accomplished. Um, they will now move into, once you hear you've been awarded, I'll just keep you updated, um, as that work, it's probably at least a year out before that construction would happen. I would imagine, not this summer, but, you know, later. Um, we'll have to coordinate with DPW and see what their planning is. Um, but I just want to thank the DPW leadership and, um, and Sarah and the safe route to school sidewalk work. Um, and it's exciting, so.
It is exciting. And, uh, thank you to Sarah Delay and her work.
I believe, um, Julie Squires was someone else who was really pivotal in bringing this to our community. So thank you to everyone. I know that they've been working on this for several years, trying to get Westboro more involved in the safe routes to school program. Um, we have created and participated in many events to be able to, um, show the Massachusetts Department of Transportation that we're invested in this and our community. So thank you to everyone.
And I think there's other projects in our future and ones that we mapped out that we can continue to apply for. So, um, this is a substantial one and, and really hits a high-target area, so really exciting.
Well, that is great. So, um, just an announcement that the next regular session meeting of the school committee is scheduled for Wednesday, March first, twenty twenty-three. And do we have a motion to go into executive session?
Yes, I can make the motion. Um, I make a motion that we vote to meet in executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-one-A-three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, uh, school administrators, teachers, tutors, paraeducators, custodial employees, and food service employees, administrative assistants. And under Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-one-A-seven, to review and approve executive session minutes from February first, twenty twenty-three. Um, and I vote that we, uh, meet in executive session to discuss collective bargaining as, um, any open discussion would be detrimental to our negotiations.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Steve Bachelor, second. Any discussion? Roll call, vote?
Bachelor, yes.
Vincent, yes.
Edinburgh, yes?
London, yes.
Dorit, yes.
So, we are now in executive session. I invite everyone to now exit the room unless you have been invited to attend this executive session.